If we could rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for whose name is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Gentlemen, we have minutes of our meeting held on November, no, today's November twenty first, I'm looking at the wrong one, November seventh.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a public hearing this morning at ten o'clock, so we're going to, um, this public hearing is in accordance with RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B. Where are we? It's to accept a grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the recycling partnership. Um, the grant will be used for community education and outreach as well as offset for the purchase of new recycling carts, which obviously re- the new contract, if all goes well, starts January first, correct? All right. Um, I will guess open it to the public if anyone has any questions, if we can answer them. Everyone's well educated, we know.
No, I still have a question.
You have a question?
Not about the grant.
Oh.
But it's about the recycling carts. We, when we entered this bidding process, and I think this is gonna be a townwide pro- problem, at least I as a selectman was under, every house would get, every household would get two.
Trash cans.
Trash cans, for better lack of words. One was for the trash and one was for recycling. One would get picked up weekly, the other would get picked up bi-weekly, but other containers could be purchased. So if you had a large family, you could buy more than one trash container to put outside your door on your, in your yard, because, and I know they hold ninety quarts or ninety gallons, but I, is that the truth? Where do we stand with the answer on this?
That was my understanding when we went into discussions with Casella. I am still waiting back from them on confirmation from that.
So we don't know yet, really, if you can.
And I think if, I remember us sitting and saying.
They absolutely would, that the customer has to purchase it.
Yeah, we understood that.
But that, yeah, I mean, there would do, I don't know why there would be any hesitation on their part.
Yes, they have, we have been back and forth with Peter and he has since told Colleen no, and I had said, well, I very clearly remember Jean and I both sitting in that meeting and you said we could purchase their, they could purchase them on their own, they would be X cost, so I am waiting for confirmation.
Well, it's, it's gonna be, I mean, when January one comes, this thing goes in, I mean, there's a street down off one oh six there for a while, that on Wednesdays, the corner of the street and one oh six, which is not a street to see, it's a private road, there's a good one ton pickup load of trash. So if they, if those households on that private street who bring it out to one oh seven, they never, this ain't gonna work. And if they're gonna only empty the ones that the machine can pick up, we're gonna have piles of trash like we used to on the back roads and people just throwing the stuff side the road, because this is, this is not gonna be good, and that's gonna be right in the middle of winter. It's, and I don't, I agree with what you two ladies have said, and I think it's time we send them a written notice that this, this is a problem. I mean, if it, we're not gonna be able to comply with it as a town and the people in this town, although they're not very happy, and I'll just touch on this and shout up with their tax bills, they certainly aren't gonna be happy with their garbage strewn all over the yard.
And you know, now that I think about it, because remember my comment was, one of my pet peeves is if you go over through Tilton and Franklin, whatever day they pick up, I think it's both Tilton and Franklin are already on that program, because my pet peeve was after they pick it up, the cover's wide open, right? That's only my own pet peeve, but now that I think about it, I've only ever saw two containers in front of houses. I've never, ever seen, go ahead.
My thought, I mean, and this is just my memory from the conversations, my thought was they were gonna get a recyclable container and one trash container, and that was per household to limit the amount of trash per household. So they were, they were gonna be able, instead of having a larger one, they were gonna be able to purchase a smaller one.
But still.
But they didn't, but only two.
Yeah.
That, I, I'm sorry, but that's just my, that's my.
And, and, and as I think about it going, you know, when I've gone over and noticed that, obviously you have a driveway and one container's on one side of the driveway and one container's on the other. Now, maybe when I've been over, it's trash day and they have two trash containers, and maybe another day is a recyc-, I'm not sure, but I have noticed that.
Before this goes into effect, we have to have an answer on this. I mean, we have to have an answer, and then we've gotta tell the public what that answer is.
And are they gonna visit every household?
Look at the garbage you have on, this coming weekend.
They are going to deliver the carts to every, the company that was supplying the carts is going to hand-deliver the carts to everyone.
They are.
And they'll have, um, education packets attached to the carts that show them, you know, the calendar for the year, because now we're gonna be recycling every other week.
Other week, yeah.
And it will show, um, what's recyclable, what's not, where the placement of the carts can go, because they have to be, you know, so many feet apart and can't be underneath your mailbox and can't be underneath a tree, so there, there is gonna be some education and there's gonna, it, this is not gonna fix every questions or concerns, there's gonna be hiccups, there's gonna be people who don't want to, who have excess garbage, who are not gonna wanna spend however many dollars it's going to be for a new cart because they don't want to. There's people who have already said, I don't wanna recycle, but they don't have a choice now.
I've actually heard that from a couple of people.
So, I mean, there's gonna be hiccups, I know other communities deal with the same thing. I know in Franklin, they don't even do the recycling anymore, and I had heard, because I know people who live in Franklin, that they ended up, the town ended up having to buy all, everyone a third or second cart because of the excess trash, but again, that's still another cost.
Maybe what I saw was, it was trash day and there was only trash.
We have to work on a plan for this, because this is coming fast and furious.
Oh, it is, and, and between me and Colleen, this has been nonstop, there's a lot of stuff going behind the scenes as to the education they need to get out and, um, getting everyone made well aware that the carts are coming in a couple of weeks.
And it's my understanding, again, that if you have four, five garbage cans, what are you gonna do with those now?
They will.
I don't know about anybody else, but my garbage cans all have holes in the bottom.
Right, they will ha- take them if people want to recycle them, there's a designated week that they will take them back, you just have to label, take me, I'm recyclable.
Vicki, go.
I just have a question, um, talked about a second barrel and people having to purchase that, and that would be a problem, people would not wanting to do that, but right now there are a lot of people that already recycle, maybe we bought a blue bin, is that, that you have to, yes, I'm giving myself that on that.
No, the blue bin.
You have, or you already have a second bin, so suppose my, the one that we get is full and I already have a blue bin, is that okay to use that?
No, because we.
The machine will pick it up.
I know, but they have to do it by hand a little.
There's no more by hand, it's a driver and a truck and it's automated, so I would suggest if you are a household, and the carts are bigger, they're a lot bigger than the one that you have.
I actually seen them on, in Massachusetts and I went through the process with the same, they gave you the cart, they dropped it off, they gave it for shore, everything was excellent, um, but I was just wondering, um, with that extra problem.
So I would keep.
There are people that recycle, I think that we, giving the town more credit, that I think a lot of people are very conscious and have already done that, so the bins are huge, they're absolutely massive, so.
I think the ones that are claiming they don't wanna recycle, they are, you're exactly right, that they're, those are the ones that tend to be on social media and complain about it, because they don't wanna do it, but it is what it is, yes. What, Kevin?
I thought the ninety-five gallon pies came also, because wasn't that what was gonna be allowed per household?
Well, it's our understanding that you have a little lady that, that, that's a huge container to try to get out to the road, and maybe she doesn't require a big night, whatever the, the big one is, that there was the availability of getting a smaller one, if they chose.
My question was, isn't that the limit though, that one per household supposed to have? About four?
Yeah, I, I have no idea.
So the standard, the standard size cart that is coming from Casella is the ninety-six gallons there. Do you have a smaller one for those who may consume lot less trash or who may, who, or who may be unable to, you know, lug a big one down? Or some people have a long driveway, so they have to physically put it in their car and are concerned that the larger ones won't fit, but there is gonna be a criteria that residents will meet in order to get a smaller one, but that will be on a as-needed basis.
Because the second can, because the ninety-five gallon was the limit, I just didn't know if somebody was gonna purchase a second can, what happens if somebody put two cans out in one of these?
That's the question he wants answered, is are you allowed to buy a second?
That was clearly, when they presented that to us, that was cr- the recyclable and the trash, you get two cans, one for recyclable, one for trash, but others could be purchased.
That's how we, we.
That was clearly understood, and I.
I remember it, yeah.
So the best of my knowledge, there was no restriction or limit in the contract as to how much they were gonna pick up.
That's correct.
I mean, they've been picking up, you know, you're paying, if they pick up ninety-six gallons at your house and then they pick up another hundred gallons at your house, the town's still paying for it, so we're paying by the ton to dispose of that, so, but my understanding was they were gonna let you purchase that second container, and whether it's another large one or a small one, but it has to be.
And again, and again, maybe they can't even get them. Right? I mean, that, maybe, maybe that's the problem, they can't even.
But this has to be a news article, because this, the public doesn't see it, when we, we're limiters getting ready for it, we've gotta tell them this, we had one contractor, not that we wanted one contractor.
I am working on a, a news press to go out this week or next week.
But this is happening, because when they.
So were they gonna give us a second barrel of recycling now? Is that?
No, you're getting one, you're getting two barrels, one trash, one recyclable, is my understanding.
Okay.
But if you want a third one, whether you want a third one that's recyclable or trash, you have to purchase it, correct?
That was the understanding that we had going in.
That was kind of what I thought.
And I'm sure it'll be that way, I just think there was confusion of a conversation that we had, so.
Okay.
My answer?
Our apartment house is being taken care of.
Don't stare.
Two flex, right flex. Yeah, how many units and not?
Isn't it?
How many units, how many units?
It's three.
It's up to three, if you have more than three, then you have to have some other type of service.
Okay, so it's up to three?
Up to three.
Okay.
And all those that are currently receiving trash pickup that are in excess of the three have been notified that as of January first, they will have to seek alternate means of getting their trash collected.
Gotcha.
Are we locked into a January first hour?
Yes, we are.
I don't think people realize how much trash though really is ninety-six pounds.
Right, it is a lot.
A lot of trash.
Right, it is.
I mean, most of them have, what, thirty, forty gallon containers now, and now we're tripling it, so.
It is.
You gotta think so, when you drag it out in the snow.
Yeah.
That's why you have a track.
Yeah.
And then, um, to, I got sidetracked or interrupted, I would just keep one of, if you recycle a lot and you feel that the every other week or you're gonna have excess, just keep one of your barrels and put it in and then transfer it the next week, I mean, that's what I'm gonna do, keep one barrel for extra garbage if I have it or extra recyclables, because there's gonna be times of the year where, around Christmas, that you probably have excess and, um, those of us who do like to recycle a lot participate more than others.
Um, any other comments? Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I have a comment, just from a couple of calls that I've received in, I think for people that aren't recycling now, it's an education issue, and I was specifically told that, because they've seen recycling in other places and you can only recycle this and this, but you can't recycle glass or you can't recycle cardboard, and they don't ever remember getting specific information from the town about what could and couldn't be recycled.
So that's probably gonna be the educa- case, the education piece that comes with the barrel, like Vicki said.
Yes, exactly.
What they, what they gave was, it was awesome.
It's the same company and from Massachusetts, and they, the barrels are huge, I really, um, I think they're gonna, they're gonna be really pleased with that.
And every cart has a education packet in them that says absolutely everything that they need to know, and as I already said, that they will be hand-delivered to every.
This isn't, I mean, we're not the first town that's done this.
No, it's just a change, and people don't like change.
It's just change, right, nobody likes to have to think about, I guess, what they're throwing in the trash.
And as much as I can put it in the newspaper or on our website or in the newsletter, there's always gonna be a handful of people who.
That are not gonna.
Not gonna be aware, I mean, they'll be aware once their, their carts arrive, that tells them, you know, this is how you, you know, need to place them and.
People that might have a driveway that's up there on the hill, that they're gonna complain or whatever, it doesn't, it is what it is, trash is becoming a very expensive, endeavor, that's for sure. All right, any other comments? Then we'll close the public hearing, and, um, could I have a motion?
I'll make a motion in accordance with RSA thirty-one colon ninety-five dash B to accept the grant in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the recycling partnership. The grant will be used for community education and outreach as well as offset the purchase of new recycling carts.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, it will be. It'll be what it is, all right. Um, heritage, community award, Vicki, you know, you're here for that.
If you can't see me, stand up, okay? Okay, good morning, everyone, and thank you for giving me the pleasure to announce the twenty, twenty-two community heritage awards here today and to share this task with the board every year. Victoria Ribero is receiving the youth leadership award but is unable to attend because she's away attending classes at Southern New Hampshire University, so I excused her for that, not a problem. Um, I would still like to share a little bit about Victoria. The Heritage Commission's goal was to have a student representative attend and participate in monthly meetings, and for two years, Victoria held this position for the commission. Victoria was a huge help with the senior citizen soup bags project created last winter. She also eagerly worked on projects to prepare for Old Home Day. Victoria's involvement with the Heritage Commission proved to be insightful for its members as well. She brought an exciting energy and a younger perspective in discussions about the town's history and heritage. I will be meeting with her later this week to present the youth leadership award to her and will send along all of our congratulations. The next award has the word exceptional in it, and it fits this person to a T. Would Jeanie please come up? You stand behind me hiding, seriously? Okay.
You can almost do it.
Almost. The exceptional commitment to community award was overwhelmingly chosen to be given to Jeanie Bowden. As most of you here know, Jeanie retired last spring from the town administrator's role in Belmont after a long tenure. Jeanie's professionalism and eagerness provided a great teamwork environment. Her assistance to the Heritage Commission especially was invaluable. She consistently went above and beyond to assist its new members and especially to me in my role as a new chairperson. Jeanie's many years as the town's administrator was always held in high regard. She provided experience beyond compare and was proven time and time again to be immeasurable to the town of Belmont. The Heritage Commission was greatly enhanced by her guidance and counted on Jeanie's support, confidence, and expertise. Her knowledge and persistence to help them in every way possible could not be overlooked. This award is given to Jeanie Bowden with a grateful thank you attached. Her exceptional commitment to the community will be felt for many years to come for all that she has accomplished and gave to the town of Belmont, and.
Thank you.
I was, I had to get that over, because I knew I'd cry, so I, I was hard to, who was gonna go next, I know crying on the podium, I'm sorry. And Wendy Richter, would you please come up?
Did I, had Wendy Richter?
Richter?
Richter.
I can do that, okay. Wendy Richter from Smith's Apple Orchard is also receiving an award for giving to the town community and to its heritage. Many Belmont towns will visit yearly to Smith's Orchard, and needless to say, Smith Orchard has an astounding following of patrons every year, both near and far. Smith's Orchard has been a mainstay for many, many years, and the Preservation and Agricultural Traditions Award easily fits the orchard's longstanding role in what is given to the town. The words tradition and preservation in the award give credit to Wendy and her family for their dedication to continuing the deep heritage and history of farming and the harvesting of various types of apples in Belmont. Smith Orchard has been owned and operated by Rob and Wendy Richter since December of nineteen eighty-five. The Richers bought the farm from Charlie Smith, who planted eighty trees in nineteen twenty-nine. Wendy and her son continued the operations of the farm after Rob's passing in two thousand eighteen. The orchard has been recognized as a farm of distinction by the New Hampshire Department of Agriculture, Marcus and Food. The Heritage Commission was honored to acknowledge Smith Orchard for the contributions to the town. The town of Belmont truly appreciates the Richter family for their true gift of giving to their community and creating happy traditions to many families. I am a hunter, sorry.
Can we get a quick picture?
Of course, of course.
For, um, the newsletter as well, so, um, we did this last year.
We did it back there, you guys are so far away, but can we do it around here, up there?
You want us to come forward then?
Yes, I do.
You wanna go there?
Right here.
Orders. We always have to go up to Smith's to pick apples, because that was one of my husband's first jobs, was picking apples for Charlie.
So, I don't like, but don't touch that, I know it's. Go stay, you know them, you know them.
They won't bite.
I don't know. We'll have the award winners be kind of in the building.
In the building.
Yeah, there we go. All right, you guys will have to go this way, I, we will follow me, this is like, there's some poles in the. Can you fit us off? Are you going zoom or are you gonna be moving?
They'll probably get sick to this time. Reflex.
Outside of you, Vicki, thank you so much, I'm sorry about that. Oh, my goodness, thank you so much.
Vicki? Go out to dinner, right?
Yes, because then I'm sending it over to the newsletter, I can send you a little.
Okay, perfect, thank you. I just wanna make sure I get the ward names right.
Vicki, do you want to, the pin stock update is on their agenda, do you wanna address them while you're here? We can ask the chair if she wants to move it up for discussion?
It's not really, I accept what I just, the letter I sent, but if you want, sure, that can stick around.
All right, we'll do that next time, if that's okay.
Do you wanna move it up?
Sure, sure.
So what you emailed me, I put in their packets. If you have any. If you wanna just talk about this?
Okay, so, um, my goodness, um, we were contacted by, um, a ripoff.
Yeah.
And he had said, hey, the pin stocks are falling to the water, you concerned about that? So we looked into it and we, um, went through the Preservation Alliance to get information, and they gave us a, uh, structural engineer that came for, at no cost, which was awesome, and they gave us a huge, and I did send that to everybody. Um, I don't know if I sent it to them or if I gave it to.
Yes, we had that meeting where we talked about how.
Um, and, and it was a lot, it was very.
Going to be very costly.
Yeah, your husband came in and spoke to us back a while ago, okay, it's coming, it's coming, okay, yeah.
And we were like, it was way, it was just too much of a cost to endure to fix that, and it was, it was, there's so many other things that have to be done, and falls, falls, but what was really important that came to our attention was the safety concerns.
For the end of it or something, yeah.
That, that we were brought to our attention through this, um, study, and it was two grates that were wide open and we were concerned about kids going in, and I didn't even know these things existed, um, just a safety thing, so he suggested putting some type of, to close it up. And then, um, by the bridge, if you cut across to go over to the bedstand, you can actually see part of the pin stock coming through the grass and it start to, um, deteriorate, and if someone's walking, it's a path that people think that they should, and they should stay on the asphalt, oh, no, no, gotta cross that. And, um, so if something, some people are walking on it and it breaks away, that could be a problem as far as liability, so maybe putting something over that is, that was something that we, um, were concerned about. So we thought bringing that to you and Jack did that, and it's kind of like, where are we at? You know, we have no problem to say, we would take, we would want to take care of that, we have no problem financing that and getting, you know, we wanna work together as to what you think of how that can be done effectively.
I think that we had, again, don't, don't quote me, but I thought that, that it was kind of left that we agreed that, that something needed to be done, because we don't need a kid going in there or, or whatever, and so I think that's where it was kind of left, I think.
I thought we had decided that we were gonna ask.
Patrick to look at it?
Patrick and their, the mechanic to weld it.
No, all right.
He's, the last conversation we had, that they were gonna actually put like a skid or something over the end of that, so the kids couldn't go in.
Right.
As far as the pipe that you're talking about, this over here by the, uh, diarrhea home picking table.
Yeah.
That's actually above the ground a little bit, you actually walk over it, uh, and the only way to really solve that would be to take a backhoe and break it apart, right? How do you look at it? Yeah, um, there's really nothing you could build over it, because it's already above ground.
Why don't we look at that?
And that's been that way for years.
If you do that, you fill it with global fill or something like that, I mean, it's.
Well, why don't you take a look at it, you two, and come up with a plan for that?
So I, I just, whatever, I mean, it's not our, kind of, our decision, we're just bringing that to attention.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, we just wanna try to get a safety, safety thing, so if anything, the whole pin stock from A to B is just, if it's a safety thing and can be taken care of, then it's, it was all worth all that.
It needs to.
You're after it.
All right, um, so you guys will look at it and get back to us and we'll kind of keep you in the loop, I mean, it's, it's, we're, so anything that these guys decide to make it safety.
I didn't wanna put more work on them, but, um, I just didn't want, I just said, what do you mean, is do, what can we do to, you know, it's a triangle thing, but I think they've got a lot to do, I think I wrote the letter, I, I know that that was something that was suggested, and I'm, and Jack's like, what, you know, so.
All right, all right.
You just let us know and.
So it's back in our ballpark, to look at it and we'll figure something out.
Well, like, I mean, Mark just said, I mean, we're, we're a, we're, we believe, I'm not positive, or it's, the people shouldn't be walking anyway, which.
Yeah, but we all, but we all know how that works.
Is that a shortcut?
Yeah.
Ninety, ninety-five percent of people use that shortcut, they don't have a path, but why don't we lock the shortcut off?
All right, we'll come up with something, I guess, all right.
Tell us what, tell us what to do.
Yeah, all right. Okay.
So if there's any cost to buy a grate and weld it or whatnot, just submit it in Heritage, you'll take care of it.
Well, I, I mean, because I'm not, I haven't really, like, examined it yet, but to me, I think that pipe is off the ground, it's, you know, you would have, you would have, you know, put some type of staging up or do something, I, I don't think it's gonna be, you know, it's something that, it's not gonna be a human effects, but you can look at it, we'll look at it, definitely.
All right, okay, we'll work on that.
Thank you.
And, and at least we'll keep you in the loop so that we know what we're gonna do. What they come up with for an idea, I guess, is how we'll handle that.
Be creative, it'd be fun.
Okay, dynamite, okay, all right, thank you, Vicki. Um, POW flag donation.
Yes, and we had a visitor in town hall, I believe she is possibly a resident to Kathy Brown, she is the chair of the board of the Rolling Thunder New Hampshire, and she noticed that we did not have a POW flag next to the POW chair at downtown hall, and they would like to donate the flag if we would buy the, um, pole and stanza. I asked Patrick if we had any extras laying around, and he said we do not, he said he looked on Amazon and they're about sixty to ninety dollars for this set.
I guess, I, I think, I mean, I don't have an issue with that.
If the coordinator wants to supply that.
It's kind of in the, it adds another thing in that hallway, that's the only thing can, and, isn't it?
We ain't gonna be there that long, get the stand.
Get the stand, okay, yeah, I mean, I, I don't have an issue with that, that's for sure.
And Patrick, they did say that if we ever have any replacements of POW flags within the town, that we could reach out to them and they would donate.
Okay, good.
Do we have one at the Police Department?
We do.
Okay, so, I said, I thought we had two areas where the flags were. Is it downtown at the Memorial and the PD?
We have one here by the library and that place, I didn't wanna, sure, screen for alarm, there's a.
This is one at the Fire Department?
I believe it's the Fire Department.
Yes, yes, okay, all right, so we have four?
Yeah, so that's another avenue to reach out to if that would be something to donate.
Okay, all right. All right, um, snow ordinance change.
Craig, wanna come forward and present your proposal?
Sure. Yeah. So, um, our snow ordinance, uh, regulating snow interceptions in the building, the last time that was updated was two thousand seventeen. Um, Brian and myself, we are proposing that we, you have to, a written language, we are proposing that we add, um.
Or moving across the surface of any travel portion, so in other words, when people come out of their driveways with their plow and they plow across the road and now you've got these.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not.
I mean, the, the old language, this kind of just burns up the old language a little bit. It basically says, you know, because salt is so expensive, you know, we've got people plowing down the road, plowing across the road, pushing their snow back use across the road, which prevents us from pushing the snow back on. It just, just basically says, you know what, you have, keep it on your own side of the road, you shouldn't be, you shouldn't be doing that, so. Yeah, so we're just proposing that we change the Section Two Prohibited Acts to, uh, add, uh, or moved across the surface of any travel portion of any public road.
I'll make a motion to accept that ordinance that's changed.
Nope, we're just going to accept that we make those proposes and then we have to have a public hearing for you to formally accept those. So, if you're good with the language change.
Yeah.
We'll hold another public hearing to accept that and I will probably try to bring forward the solid waste ordinance change at the same time to, to make those.
Now, there's a penalty change on the back, I see yellow.
Well, I had noticed, this is the first time I'd ever looked at it, I did notice that there is a penalty, I don't know how we assess the penalty of the violation and who's in charge of enforcing it and if we have ever and.
Well, I think that's worth a mind.
We usually, we would issue the violation.
The citation.
The violation?
Yeah, I guess.
Do you also issue warning letters? I have, I have two letters, one for state highway and one for, uh, town roads.
Yeah. Yeah.
About plowing across roadways and.
Have you ever issued, have you ever issued a fine?
We never have, we've had good compliance when we've gone to a homeowner and given them the letter and said, tell your plow back, I can't do this.
Okay.
And they've taken care of it, so we've been pretty active with that for quite a few years, but more and more people have moved in and they don't want the snow in their yard.
Yeah, no.
They'd rather it be in front, you know, a problem for him, so they push it across the street.
Yeah.
It freezes into a big wall of ice and they get it with a plow with, you know, twenty thousand dollars.
Well, it's, that, it'll freeze in, in bumps on the road, like frozen.
Yep. This, this language actually helps them out too, because I think.
Oh, sure.
This kind of go, this kind of coincides with the state language.
So, when it says the penalty and the amount of a hundred dollars if an individual, and five hundred for any other person, I assume that means like a commercial?
Commercial law.
Commercial, okay, all right, all right.
Yeah, you, you have to take the safety aspect of this, you're putting a plow truck broadside in the middle of a roadway on a summer day.
Oh, I know.
Yeah. Come on, only bad things.
Especially with, especially with the way people drive.
It's just getting worse, like everything, it's getting worse and worse, certainly we're just having, you know, no respect for anybody else across the street.
Anybody.
Or I notice people put it in the street thinking, oh, the town's gonna come by, but then the town doesn't come by for however long and then you've got people.
Freezes up and you gotta.
And, you know, if everybody knew kind of what we were doing, it would be fine, but, you know, we walked salt the road, if you wanna do that before we treat the road, you know, salt's eighty-five dollars a ton.
Well, I think the other.
When we had somebody, you know, scraping the road after we've salted it, it's just.
And I don't think a homeowner understands that, I would, I would assume, if you've, you've plowed across the road and you've left a couple mounds on each side, somebody hits it and ends up in a tree, you're really liable. They'll try to come out of town, but it's really the homeowner that did that, I would assume.
Or, or the person plowing.
Oh, that's not me.
The person who left it there is responsible.
Right, is responsible, okay, all right, okay, so we'll.
Well, if you're good with the language.
No one has any comments?
Then we'll officially hold the public hearing to accept it and then the public can comment and.
Public hearing, okay. Awesome, okay, um, any other new, thank you, any other new business?
I do not for new business.
Um, all businesses, um, pensacola handled cemetery trustee update, I see Dave is, um.
Yes, I have invited, uh, Dave Karen to join our Zoom as John had asked him to attend a meeting and ask some questions, Sharon is here.
Yeah. 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 Okay.
I did speak with Laura, our attorney, and we did look at the Warren article, uh, how the capital reserve was created because there was concerns, or there was questions if we could use.
Oh, for attorney fees, okay.
The capital reserve fund to pay for legal expenses and it is not, the, the article clearly states maintenance of the cemeteries only, so. That is not an option.
Okay, and so, we've asked Dave to, um, help us answer, um. Help us answer how these, um.
Perpetual care funds.
Perp, thank you, got it, like, the perpetual care funds, how they could be used for, um, some of these things that Sharon wants to do within the cemetery. Dave, can you help us with that?
Sure, uh, good morning.
Good morning.
Are you okay?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, the, currently the Charitable Trust Division, over the Attorney General's Office, very clear that, uh, pending an order from a Superior Court Judge, Judge Agarwade, depending upon the situation. That, uh, the perpetual care fund can only be used for the care and maintenance of, of individual lots for perpetual care. And, uh, as the Chair knows, in her, uh, position with Southwood Cemetery, is that the trustees receive an invoice every year from the Southwood Cemetery Association, which outlines the cost for perpetual care, number of lots, the number divided, the number of, collecting the current lot maintenance cost. And then outlines a number of lots in which we hold funds for perpetual care and we issue that, uh, check to Southwood every year. So, uh, based upon what our understanding is and looking at the Secretary of Attorney General's website, uh, it's pretty clear that these funds, unless otherwise directed by a judge, uh, can only be used for the maintenance of individual lots.
Okay, so then we are back to the question of monies being added into, well, being, monies being used from your, um, funds to pay for an attorney.
Right, um, well, that's why we could add it, the five thousand dollars into our general budget because we couldn't either from the capital to start addressing the two major legal questions that we have.
Mm-hmm.
Um, one, what to do with those funds, we either need to be able to use them or in the case of most of the people who are not buried here, then it doesn't, don't know that we can hold funds that belong to somebody who's not here. Using Katie and Walter Wells is specific, they have trust funds in Kylie Cemetery, there are large amounts of money, Walter and Katie Wells are buried in San Bernardino, California, I can prove that.
But they still bought those lots there.
Um, they.
Even though they might not be buried there, they still legally own lots in those cemeteries, correct?
They do, but, yeah, but I don't know which ones because there's no.
Yeah, there's no, but they.
So, guys, if there comes into the, you know, if we wanted to go through the time and the expense, we could do ground penetrating radar, we could find it.
I don't think, I don't think that, I don't, you know, as I listen to this, okay, if I own a lot in, I don't know, some cemetery in, you know, up north, I own that lot. Whether I'm buried there or not, I still own that lot and I've purchased it and it's there. I mean, and then I die suddenly somewhere else and I get buried somewhere else, I don't know, that was one of, I thought afterwards was one of my questions, was the fact that, you know, it's like, I own a piece of land somewhere. Whether I'm dead or alive, I still own that piece of land.
Well, actually, and that was part of the last conference that we had, you don't actually own the land, you only own the space.
But, well, okay, so I own that space, so, well, it's the same thing, that, that they've still bought a space, what we'll call space, I guess, they still bought a space in that cemetery, whether they're buried there or not, they still own that. Am I correct or incorrect, Dave, by assuming that?
No, I, I, I think you are, it's sort of, they have a lasting condominium.
Yeah.
Where you find rights to a location and, uh, you know, my suggestion, it goes through this recently here, Derry, not the cemetery, but it's a trust land. And we had to file a petition for a psych prey, but we rely heavily upon the Director of Charitable Trust, uh, her name is Diane Quinlan, she's over at the Attorney General's Office. And I rely upon her heavily as we did and, uh, and she has, her and her staff have a great reputation with the courts. And so, my suggestion is to, you know, hold Diane, uh, pose what you'd like to do and take her feedback and work for your counsel, uh, to work on that. But, you know, if you, if you look for a judge's approval to use funds outside of the original tenant, uh, it, it will be extremely helpful to have support of the Charitable Trust Division on your side.
Well, we've been working with Terry Knowles, who is the former Director, and she had advised us as the way to go. And I've also talked to Tom Donovan in the DOJ, using the example that I sent you by email, Abby Heard has a trust fund with the cemetery in the Apple Orchard, in Smith's Apple Orchard. Um, she's buried in Union Road, uh, Union Cemetery in Laconia. And I tried to trace everybody else that was buried in there to see if there was any relationship to her and there wasn't, um, and her parents are buried across the street. And it was suggested by the DOJ that there was probably a clerical error, the records are lost, and we should look into using those funds that she had for her parents across the street. So, this is the kind of advice that I thought from the DOJ. So, I'm looking to go.
I'll say, last week I attended a conference and I attended the Charitable Trust, they had a, a session and they said the exact same thing, they said that she should really start with the Charitable Trust, just like Dave said. Um, they've handled this in the past, before we just jump to going to legal, go through the Charitable Trust first, see what they can help us with and then.
Because whatever they help us with is, um, not costing.
But the Charitable Trust has already said that our best, our best option is a psych prey petition.
And they said they would help with that, so I would.
I did hear that.
I would gear you back towards them.
Okay.
And, and, and again, you're talking with a woman that's not, no longer part of that?
She's not, she's doing outside the office.
Okay, so, right, so you need to talk with who's sitting there, the current.
The current lawyers.
I'd like to see that documentation.
Yeah, yeah.
Not, not verbally, I wanna see.
Sure, sure. Sure, they should be able to obviously keep Alicia in the loop and whatever. I would, I would make the phone call and go directly to the Attorney General's Office to get them updated.
So, do you want to just send, you know, send you email copies of the emails that I got from the DOJ?
I don't think so.
Yeah, yeah, so, so make contact with the Attorney General's Office, the, and, and her name again, Dave?
It's, uh, Diane Quinlan.
Quinlan, all right.
Just, I, N, L, A, F.
All right.
She placed, uh, Tom Donovan, a recently retired.
Okay, all right.
And then I briefly asked them the same question, they said, have your cemetery trustees contact us and we could work with them.
Okay.
So, so Terry had the position and I got the advice from Terry and then Tom Donovan had the position and he already told me, but now you want me to go back to the DOJ a third time to the new director and talk to her.
Correct, definitely.
And we'd like her replies in writing, sign them.
Yeah, so what happens if she retires in January and she's not there in February when I come back?
Well, it'll be somebody else.
Yeah.
Okay, it's, we can't control that unfortunately, but, but I would say to get in touch with the existing person, all right, and update everything and then that person will obviously be sending emails to you, copy, copy, Alicia, however. All right, and then, um, and it probably may be the same thing, all right, but at least we'll have the latest.
I mean, they seemed confident that they would be able to work with them, um, they work with another, other municipalities when, say, someone creates a trust to give girls-only, uh, cert, uh, scholarship for basketball, well, we can't separate out sex anymore. So, you know, they have to go to the trust, Charitable Trust and ask for maybe it to be the psych prey, I don't know how to say it, to, to amend it to be for a, a scholarship for students instead of just girls or just boys. So, it's, it's the same intent, they wanted a scholarship for X, but now they changed it, so, same thing, they intended to, you know, have a lot at the cemetery and.
Yeah.
They got buried somewhere else or moved somewhere else, so they, they're asking the courts for, to still use it for the intended use.
Okay, even though they're not there. Got it, yeah. Okay, all right, awesome.
So, as far as the budget goes, I was gonna say at twenty-one, because even if, even if they're saying.
I'm not putting five, I, I personally would vote no on the five thousand dollars for the attorney, because I think there has to be more of your committee involved in this, as well as yourself, to know where this stands and get clarification from the, from the, that Ms. Quinlan, if she be the person this year or whoever, Sam Jones next year, of where, how to proceed. And I believe that's what, uh, Mr. Karen has said, and I wanna, I wanna be able to read what they say. I don't wanna hear someone's name and someone else's name, I wanna be able to read, and that would, we have a confirmation in writing that this could happen, that would change, might change my outlook on the five thousand dollars.
And I would think if, and, and there may still be time, although I don't, nothing seems to work very fast anymore, but, but there may be time, we've still got some time, um, before we finalize, correct, the, the budget, so, yeah. All right, okay, awesome.
Before you get up, I wanna ask you a question, what is your intentions, uh, towards Lauren's fencing on that five thousand dollars? I mean, it, it's up in the air, it's been over a year now and they've got five thousand dollars of your money.
Didn't, Nora didn't fill you in, okay, so. We got, he got the letter, Alicia and I put together a letter and we sent it to him, he got one, he sent him another one, he didn't pick up that one, it came back. And then, um, it was told that we, as the trustees, need to figure out what we're gonna do about the situation, so Kyle reached out to him by phone, he didn't answer, reached out to him again, he didn't answer, or I reached out to him by phone, he didn't answer. Um, and then on Saturday morning, I got an email from him. I haven't forwarded it out yet, but I did send it to Nora and Kyle, no, I got it on Friday, and I sent it out to them. It said, a whole list of all his financial problems are going down, um, and I was trying to get their ideas on what they wanted to do going forward, um, and they just said, it's gonna be basic, I guess, just to do whatever it is we're gonna do.
Why couldn't you, why couldn't you just file with a small claims court? I mean, it's, it's under, it's five thousand or under.
Right, but I've only known for two weeks that I have the ability to do that.
That would be theft of services, wouldn't it, Matt? So, that, that's a criminal case.
You weren't taking the money, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, it took a fifty-dollar deposit.
And obviously, if we get the five thousand dollars back, that would, that would cover the attorney fee.
Yeah, exactly.
His email said that he hasn't forgotten us, he has four customers now.
And how, and, and when, when did he receive the five thousand dollars?
Um, August nineteenth last year.
Yeah, 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 I, I, yeah.
So, I was trying to get it on the phone so that I could get a personal address from him, not just a P O box. Uh, the Attorney Attorney told me two weeks ago that we can go ahead and file a small claims case as soon as I get over whatever this medical problem I'm currently experiencing is, I will reach out to Alicia to find out. Because Laura said she thought if she sent him a letter, that might motivate him to be a little bit more attentive. She said lawyers' letters usually work, but that's not free, so I gotta find out how much that is, have her write back and that sent to him, then.
Well, don't, don't forget, every phone call that you make to this attorney, we get charged for that, I mean, she doesn't.
She said it was gonna come out of our budget and we have about eighteen hundred dollars left of our budget.
Okay, all right, as long as you understand that, but I wouldn't think it would be eighteen hundred, I wouldn't think it'd be eighteen hundred dollars to send a letter, but again, you're not a no.
Well, no, but then if I jump on this and file a small claims court, there's a hundred and twenty-five dollar filing fee, then we have to pay the Sheriff's Office, but since they don't have a physical address, then the Sheriff's Department is going to have to locate him. And those are costs that need to be paid still.
Well, it's either that or you just lose the five thousand dollars.
Well, I, it's not the intent to lose the five thousand dollars, so.
Okay, okay, all right, so you're filing a small claims court?
I am filing. I'm filing right after we meet to determine, cause our meeting is December, the first by end of December, um, to determine if we want to just go ahead and file, or if we want to probably send the letter first.
Well...
I'm not gonna let it go, it's not within my personality to do so.
Alright, alright, I just think that it's kind of, alright, alright. So, you're gonna make that decision at your next meeting, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we have to, I have to, they have to authorize the use of the funds to have the lawyer do it or to go to court. As far as I know, our plan was to go to court, but Laura seemed to feel that her sending the letter would have a little bit more impact.
Okay, alright, okay, alright. Interesting question.
But if it hasn't, I would love to have a conversation with you about that.
Yeah, yeah, right, okay.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave, nice to see you.
Thank you, Eric.
Yes. Um, solid waste ordinance discussion.
Yes, Colin and I have been thoroughly reviewing the solid waste ordinance to make the appropriate changes for the curbside collection of the automated, and kind of cleaning up some old language that was there, and just making it more clear. Um, one of the things that came up was, in the past, the board of segment have not made recycling mandatory, but with the new system, it's not really an option, as they're gonna have two carts, and they're gonna be collected by automation. I'm just looking for guidance from the board if you're going to make it mandatory.
So, what you're saying is, if we make it mandatory, that means that Suzie's gotta trash recycle?
Yep.
What if Suzie decides to put everything in trash and not recycle?
Well, that would be enforcement through Casella. And I imagine, you know, granted, there's not gonna be a person out there picking up the trash anymore, but I mean, I've heard that you can clearly tell when bags are hitting or loose recyclers are hitting, and, or if they're, or if Casella is finding that there's infractions or violations, then they would be the ones to address that, they would address that. They said that the enforcement would not really fall on the town of Belmont. And they know that people are not going to follow the rules to the T, and that there's gonna be people who put bags, trash in the recycling, or not trap, or not recycle at all, and...
They're just trying to encourage it.
They'll address that. Uh, I think by us calling out that it's not an option, it just covers us to say, um, you have to, as, you have to carts now, and they're not going to come by hands and...
Oh, my God.
And, I know there's, you know, both sides of the story, but the more we can encourage residents to recyclable, to recycle, the lower the cost to us, cause the cost recycle is less than the cost of just...
Right, that was where I was, that's, right, it's cheaper, it, it would be less burden on the taxpayers if they recycle versus throwing everything in the trash, correct?
Yes.
That's probably the right way to approach that, I guess.
Yep, it is, it's a cost savings to the town. We'll be paying less per ton for the recycles than the garbage.
Wasn't it a few years ago the other way around, though?
Was temporarily.
Yeah.
And how it started to reverse its psychology again to the, uh, savings.
Okay, alright, okay. Um, so what do you need from us, I guess, is, how do you guys feel?
I just think it's, leave it the way it is, cause we had enough restrictions on the people as we speak. I, I know, we're gonna... The way it was just explained to me, then, Casella will go to the, if they, Joe Smith on the corner of Depot Street says, like, you know, "You've been putting, you know, garbage and recyclables, recyclables in the garbage," they're gonna enforce that, we don't...
But I think if, Jean, if you correct me if I'm wrong, if I don't think, I think if you don't say shall in the ordinance, then people could be like, "Well, you didn't say I had to, and I'm gonna do what I want." And then you would come into an issue with Casella, and, you know, then our cost, and it's a... I would think you would wanna draw that hard line of saying, "No, it's not really an option anymore, where before..."
And it isn't an option, because we have a contract. It really, we've signed a contract, there is no option.
You signed a contract that they would get one for recycle and one for trash, and...
And part of the, the terms of the grant that you got for purchasing the recycling carts also included the educational piece to teach people to recycle, and why it was important to recycle, and what the cost avoidance is by recycling, and how it was a big piece of it. And if, as long as you're not having to have, you have enforced it...
Yeah, like she, Jean said, as long as we're not having to have Mark go out there and enforce it.
Right, and we don't want to enforce it, right.
And that it's on Casella to, to, to monitor. You're just giving more backup, backup and leeway, and...
As much as I hate to have to put more, more ordinances and more whatever, but it is what it is, it's...
So, that'll, if, if you're okay with that, I'll, I'll, I'll change that language to shall. And, uh, this is still in the works, the ordinance is in the lawyer's hands right now for review.
Yeah.
And then it'll also do another review through Casella, just to make sure it all jives with what they, um, expect. And then, it will build a public hearing for us to formally accept all these wonderful changes.
And we'll discuss it all over again?
Yeah, again, and, um... We will be pushing the education part, the, the grant that we got for the recycling there. I mean, they are mandating us to do a newsletter article, a newspaper article. Um, they did the, the first postcard that we sent out saying the carts are coming, that was part of that grant we got. The second car, card that will go out will be, I'm trying to have it two-sided in the sense that one strictly shows everything that you can recycle and how to recycle. And then the other thing that I thought might be important is, because this is totally new for us, is showing how to place the carts. So, they do a really nice illustration of your car, and then the cart, and then three feet over, you do your other cart, and, um, so that education piece will be up there.
No matter what, no matter how much you put out there, it's, you're still just gonna have an issue.
And I know people complained that we sent out the card during election time, but you send it too early, people forget, and you send it too late, and it's too late, and so...
Doesn't matter, you're not, goes along with, doesn't matter when you send it, it's not gonna be the right time. Next, if we send it again, it's gonna be Christmas card time, and then you'll, you know...
And we did have a small display at the election, so people could s-, could see that.
Yeah. Not from lack of trying. Okay, then, yes, move forward, I guess.
Okay.
Yes, maybe, yeah.
Um, water and sewer service extension for Mountain Lake Village Apartments.
Well, it's Mile Hill Road.
My, oh, is this a front?
Yes, this is Mr. Briat.
Yes, this is, uh...
And is a representative to the planning board. This has been, uh, about three years in the process, or maybe more than that, but he's been, been a long time. He owns property that go, it's parallel, or perpendicular to the, uh, bypass in a, in a bunch, on Mile Hill Road. Goes out behind the Mersky property, Mr. Briat, the oldest house in Belmont, I think it's Mr. Mersky's, official group. And he wants to develop that into large house lots, which is basically been somewhat approved by the planning board pending the agreement, because water is gonna come from Laconia.
Yep, and this came from Laura Spectra. And I have asked Jean, since she had started the project some years ago, she thought it was okay, and, uh, she didn't have any questions or concerns. And, um, I thought the, I think Ruth may need to sign it, but this one doesn't show a signature, so I'm just gonna ask, uh, Laura for one that needs our, cause the, the language says Exhibit Three, Belmont concurs, but it's blank, so I just think she needs to send a new one for her. But this is just saying that, um, the city of Laconia, and the sewer department have determined that the city of Laconia water and sewer systems contain sufficient capacity to accommodate the request. In addition, will create no adverse effect on the existing water system and their current customers. They agree that this will be good, in the best interest of the potential customers in the area.
Is this a development that the city is going, even though it's, some of this development's in Belmont, some of it's in Laconia, and that the city is, is not turning these lines over to us, that they are, they, they have full, it's their responsibility. They're gonna meter it, they're gonna deal with it, we get nothing.
The Laconia side of this development is gonna be apartments, as I understand it.
Okay.
The Belmont side of it is houses.
That's correct. Alright, but, but those homes are gonna be individually metered, and it's Laconia water, and we do nothing, we have no responsibility.
So, do the correction.
Ultimately, the town is going to build a hydrant fee for the per, per foot charges for those hydrants that are in the Belmont side of the property.
Alright.
Um, the main thing with this agreement was to make certain that the city of Laconia's water department didn't in any way attempt to change the existing agreement that you have over on Ruth's roof.
Right.
Because that's in place, it was adjudicated through the courts eons ago, and you don't wanna pay a different rate.
Right.
You are going, there will be a different rate for these holders.
Well, and that, so will there be, there'd probably be a different rate for the, um, hydrant fees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you will be responsible for those initially, though, until the property's built out, um, Phil and Riad should be the one that would be, you, you would, you in turn will be billing Phil and Riad for this piece. You're not gonna be, you know, charging your...
Um, and I assume, and I think we, I already looked at that, was that the line is coming in, it's, what is it, going up Mile, Mile Hill, or it's already up Mile Hill?
They have, they have water on Mile Hill already.
Okay, and then, so it's just coming off from that?
Yes.
Okay, alright, okay, alright.
Yeah, they're not going off to McReedy's, but that...
Right, right.
Eighty minutes.
Yeah, right, okay.
So, just letting you guys know that this is moving forward. I'll get a, a copy that would, I think it will require either mine or Ruth's signature. There's just nothing in Exhibit Three that has anywhere for that, so...
Okay, alright, okay, good. Um, any other old business?
Yes, um, Mike Tursey from the superintendent's office called me last week after we gave him, per his request, what it would cost for our proposed S R O officer, cause we had a internal candidate, uh, who had fifteen years of service, so it was a little bit more salary than we had anticipated when we were first looking at that.
Yeah?
Consequently, the school said that was too much money. I guess, safety is really not a concern when it comes to money. Um, so, oh, Mark left.
Yeah, he had an interview he had to go to, he said he'd be hit.
So, Mark says that he has two potential retired part-timers who he may be able to fill the positions with. So, they will be unbenefited, so that portion would be cut from the cost. So, that'll be a savings to the ta-, uh, to the school. So, I'm, after this meeting, gonna run the numbers for that part-timer and give that to them. Cause that'll be a, a set rate hourly, there'll be no extra benefits part of that.
Okay, and now we're back to the same thing. So, he has got two part-timers, and are we going to have to provide transportation for them? I mean, what if they have to go from the school to the police department, or from the school to whatever, one school to another, or, you know, um, who's, who, yeah?
We kinda planned that when we talked to Michael originally.
I thought we did, yeah.
He said that he feels that there's enough cars, or the, the person can take their own vehicle. The school has said that they don't have any cars, and that they are not gonna supply a car.
Okay, so we're still in the discussion process with this, I guess?
We're still very much in the discussion phase, and I also told him I'm not moving forward with allowing a officer to go there until we have an M O U on hand that clearly describes everything, so...
Alright, so now, now they just go when they're called?
They'll be there, I think Mark was saying, because of the, because they are part-time retired through the system, they will, they can't exceed the thirty-two hundred.
No, but I'm saying now, right now, the officers are just going, if there's an incident.
Oh, yes, sorry, yes, if there, there is an incident, they will just be called.
Alright, okay, okay. What, what else for old business?
Old business, I have invited Barrett and Barry here to discuss their proposals for the mill.
Mm-hmm, alright. Would you like to fro-, come front and center, dear? How are you this morning?
I'm feeling good, how's everyone?
Good, thank you.
This is Barry Boracan, he's one of our partners, he was also the person that testified to all this.
Okay.
So...
Alright.
I can talk big picture, he can talk finite details.
Alright.
Come here, stay quiet, yes.
I think obviously, some of our discussion was the fact that, um, um, we have an elevator.
Yes, and he's have more information on that.
Okay, good, good. It seems to me that, um, when we're talking about this, that we gotta, we gotta deal with the elevator.
Yep, thank you.
Well, stop the elevator? I think that seems to be the priority.
Well, I guess in my mind, and, and maybe someone else feels differently, but before we start, well, before we add more people to this building, or we start refurbishing this people, this building more, I guess I consider elevator, um, and, and obviously heating, those type of things. But the elevator, if we don't have an elevator, this building is, um, not a very useful to us, except maybe the bottom floor, I guess, in my mind. Not everybody can do the stairs.
We'd have an A D A problem.
We'd have an A D A problem, right.
So, Derek, if you would be...
Um, so we do, we did carry allowance in this overall cost, um, and we did get an actual quote from Otis, um, the current, in fact, of, of the elevator, uh, which actually came in a little bit lower than the allowance carried in this overall cost, so that's kind of a win, I think. Um, but the, the bottom dollar for the overall monetization from Otis would be a hundred and one thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And that would include basically your entire guts in, in...
Right, because I assume the frame is usable, I mean, what's...
Um...
To a point, no, probably not.
To a point, they, they pretty much change everything but the shell. So, your existing shaft remains, but everything on the inside, if you have a, in, in the car, then you have an alternate, um, to upgrade the interior of the car
Yep.
um, as well as a, um, you know, sort of like, uh, U V C light purification device, um, that was the interior.
Yeah, yeah.
So, this is the next one is a hundred page quote from Otis. Um, in our experience, we do have, we have reached out to other, um, elevator companies to get pricing, um, and they're working on it.
Alright, but the, the elevator we have now is Otis, correct? Alright, and it's what, twenty-five? Thirty?
That'd be thirty, it'll...
Come on, Jean.
The elevator, elevator is nineteen ninety-eight.
Is it?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five?
And the issue that we discussed, and I think Patrick through his yearly maintenance, we can chug along with it probably, but the problem is, if, if you have to fix it later after we've renovated this place, you're out how many months?
Well, we know what we went through with just the elevator for the police department, and now it's a brand-new one.
Right, right.
So, that's what makes me a little nervous, is if the elevator breaks down, we need a part, and it's out six months, and we've got this building, um, occupied.
Yeah.
Um, that's going to be a little sketchy. Yeah, that's a problem, yeah, yeah, alright, okay.
So, that's it.
So, that, that's the elevator, um, a priority list. Um, we can go through however much detail or limited detail you want. We had to go with the seven forty-seven version of it, um, we walked through, um, with Alicia, and went through kind of a list of different items. We have since had a, um, a second meeting just to kind of discuss some of the reduce, and try to reduce the overall cost of scope. But what this cost represents was kind of the all-in package, um, with the new finishes everywhere, um, alonging, um, the building, making sure that everything is brought up to what was based upon the new, uh, police station standards, um, for what we do with the finishes and anything whatnot over there, um...
So, pretty much what you're telling us, I'm looking at the last one.
Is everybody over with you?
Are you guys ready? The last page, to bring this building up and move everyone in it. Are we ready? Two million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents, right now. That's now.
That's today.
That's today, doesn't mean a year from now it's gonna be this price.
Right.
Okay.
Um, what I can say about this price is, is that we did reach out for some spot checks, all of subcontractors to get, and in our whole database of information, we get it as, as accurate as possible. But this is not a bid and out price.
Right, right.
So, we did, I was just trying to get competitive pricing on it, um...
Right, you would bid out everything within, understood.
Yep.
But I guess, you know, it, it boils down to the fact that we're talking over two million dollars to get this building where it needs to go.
Possibly, needs, needs.
Needs, needs, and again...
Uh.
Go ahead.
With that said.
Yeah.
With that said.
I know.
This, this is a starting point and it's starting up here.
Yeah.
It, it's usually the best place to start.
This is the Cadillac price.
Well, it, it is.
Now give me the.
Now, you, this certainly can be pared down, um, and there's many different ways to look at, but you could get this up too, I think, quite quickly.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
And then this building is just perfect to phase.
Yeah.
Just absolutely perfect, and you could tackle it by floor.
Each floor.
Uh, once you get it to a place where you're, you're happy with it, I think the best thing is to pare it down to where you're comfortable with the overall number, and then look at it by, by floor.
Mm-hmm.
Um, cuz it just, it, it just sets itself up for that, both mechanically, electrically, um.
In every way. I guess it, it, and, and again, I understood that, but I guess what, what we've been hearing through the years is that to try to separate, you know, or bring, do, say we do the first floor and to bring them over on the first floor, to, and the separation is something that has been, you know, greatly talked about because of records, you know, that kind of thing, but, um.
Right, yeah, that, that would be.
That's, that's been the.
What you folks have to do rental with is, is how you operate out of two buildings rather than separate offices.
Yeah. No, and I think when you mean phase, like, this year we do level two, or next year we do the first floor, and then we all move in at one time to, is it reset?
First floor.
To separate it out, there's too many people who may go to the tax office and then go over to land use or go down to my office or accessing, so to separate it, it's not like that, I, I do not see as a, a good thing at all.
So that's one way to phrase it. Now, there's other ways it's to be. You can certainly look at, um, this way with, with overall drive-up the cost over time, but you certainly could move in, you could get this building up and running in a, in get your, get your mechanical and electrical upgraded, take a hard look at, um, existing finishes and, and maybe tackle those later on. What happens later on is it becomes more expensive because now you're doing these upgrades in an occupied building. You know, whether it's flooring or ceilings or carpeting, that always drives the cost up. The most efficient cost is in an unoccupied building. But I do believe that it would be, I think Barry, working with Alicia with your folks' direction, can certainly get this down, like I said, sub-two, and then put it out on the street if that gets comfortable with you, for some hard bidding and see where it comes in at. I, I would like to hear your thoughts and direction, um, but we are post-pandemic, and these prices reflect that.
Yeah, right, right.
You, you didn't separate the, the, the floors cost-wise, uh, like, what would it cost to do the first floor?
We could do that.
You could do that.
But how do you do that?
The problem is, is, right, we can do that, but we can't move anyone in until we get all three floors done, is kind of what, that's all the vibe.
Unless, unless logistics, unless logistics-wise, you can figure out.
Right.
I know this isn't great, but logistics-wise, is there a way to be operating out of?
Two buildings, two separate buildings.
And, and what would that look like, people-wise? Um, and if, if you could make that work out, then we could look at how to, maybe it's, maybe it's more than one floor, but it's not a hundred percent of all floors. If, i- if you're occupied and unoccupied, that, that works because you're coming in and working, we're used to working in occupied spaces all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, and working in the unoccupied areas, so that really doesn't.
I think, you know, obviously from our walkthrough and everything, you know, obviously the first floor, to me, not looking at, well, I mean, electrical, mechanical, whatever, that's a figure in itself, but the first floor is probably gonna be the most expensive. Am I maybe wrong, or?
Um, for a rough guess, there it is, as probably your most infrastructure in there, that's where your, all your systems will differ. So I attribute that to your first floor as you make these, yes. If you take the mechanical, electrical upgrades out of that.
Yeah, yeah. Right.
Other than the elevator, having that on the island, I would say that your, your second floor is probably your most cost-effective to get on the space.
It, it, right.
And we've already talked about different ways to even get it down even, even further, but I would say it's pretty close to the first and second floor.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Uh, I'm sorry, first and third floor.
Third floor, um.
And a majority of this cost, I mean, almost a million dollars of it, is the, the heating and cooling system.
It's all. Yeah.
Right there, and the elevator.
Exactly, but the, the mechanical, MVP, mechanical, electrical plumbing is always your biggest cost.
It's. Yeah.
But there's ways to make that. We've looked at this as, you know, a hundred percent outside fresh air, uh, heating, cooling, there, there's ways to pan that down a little bit if, if, you know. We're way above code, this is really desire at this point.
Right, okay, so let's just, so let's.
You don't have to have a hundred percent outside, you could have fifty percent fresh air. There, there's just different ways to look at it.
Well, you know, I have a sister that, her, her office is in the basement of the John O'Morton Building in Concord. And during the pandemic, when she was working from home, she found sh- that she had no, you know.
She felt better?
She felt better, alright, and, you know, so when you're looking at the first floor of this building, I'm thinking that in my brain, and the first floor is gonna be huge when it comes to fresh air, okay, because you're not just gonna whip windows open down there. So you've gotta have, that's, you know, second, third, you could open a window, alright, but the, that's huge. That first floor is gonna be huge because we all know it is a basement and that's gonna be huge. So I guess the, 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 the thing is, is how do we approach this?
I'm not prepared today to make a decision. I really not. I mean, obviously, there's, these numbers have been around a little while because she knows more about this than we do right now, and I'd like to study this a little bit.
No. Yeah. Yeah.
No, there, there's, there's a lot to digest here and, and consider, but, um, if you could figure out the logistics of operating
Yeah. And then the. Exactly.
out of a couple buildings and what that would look like. There is some upfront costs for mechanical, electrical upgrade for the first floor.
Yeah.
But the beauty of it is, is you can terminate it at the, the ceiling, at the floor of the second floor.
Yeah. Sure.
And bring that ductwork and line sets.
Which not all buildings, so you can do that with.
Yeah, this one, just, so you don't have to have all those kinds. You don't have to do all mechanical, electrical and plumbing on the second and third floor if you just tackle the first one.
Yeah.
You have the, the equipment, the base equipment that has to be done.
Yeah.
But do we still really need to do all the plumbing? I mean, the bathrooms are all staying, we're not adding any extra bathrooms anywhere.
Yeah, the, what I was saying is, we're just bringing it up to, into the ceiling of the first floor and just terminate there.
Or are you just upgrading?
You know, this chases it all the way up through, just cap it there and let it run until you tackle the second and third floor.
Yeah. If you looked at that way. Yeah.
Or if you looked at first floor and partial second floor. I don't even pretend to understand the logistics of how you folks operate, okay?
Sure. Sure. Yeah.
So I look, Barry and I look at purely the blinders on, do the first floor, do the second floor, do the third floor. By no logistics-wise, that's not.
The only. Right. The only way that I could foresee maybe logistic-wise is the first and third. Because what's on the second floor, I could, you know, temporary go to the third floor. But how much does that really save you or work out?
We can look at it in any scenario, come up, it happens to, uh, we just.
You know, and this is only my own opinion, um, with the, um, I wanna say this, with what we hear on the street and social media and, um, if we were to even go to the voters with a two million double bond, I in my mind.
Good luck with that.
They're probably not hearing it. No, I, I understand that.
Right, I, I, you know, everyone is, um, you know, yeah.
Wrestling with their own.
It is, it, and, you know, I mean, obviously, we all know with heating, electrical and just taxes and just everything right now, I think it would be, um, almost impossible to think that we're gonna get anything passed with a bond. Um, gentlemen, questions?
So for your decisions would be really, do we wanna keep piecemealing it? Do we wanna increase maybe what we have put towards the capital reserve fund for the municipal, municipal facilities and maybe do a floor here and a floor there, or do you, like we said, wanna bond it and just get it done, or, or see if you can even bond it?
I'd say we're better off to piecemeal it, uh, boy, try to unbond, it just ain't gonna happen. Not now after this taxing we're running through right now. As it is, people wanna move out of Belmont, say nothing about fixing the town hall for them. Again, I'm not prepared to make a decision today.
No, no, purely for your discussion and thought process to think about as we are.
I wanna look at this.
Um, I know that when we did our walkthrough, we found that there were a lot of things that we could use, especially the second and third floor. The ceilings, the, you know, there's a lot of things that we can use. There's more bathrooms on the third floor than you can shake a stick at. And, you know, there's a lot of things that are not usable because of what it was used for before. Um, I think we've had those discussions, so it is, um, you know, understood, but, um, and I think as everyone knows, everything's gone up and right.
Hence why bonds aren't doing real well right now because everyone's pocketbook hurting.
Of course.
Goes to the grocery store and buys fuel, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We get it, but like I said, this is.
Alright, this is a good, this gives us.
It's a starting point?
Yeah.
This, this is, this is not that you would, you never thought you were gonna proceed with this design number. But it's a place to start rather than moving ahead and then having someone say, well, why didn't you do this?
Yeah. You're exactly right.
You, you start here.
Yeah, and now we need to digest, can we do it piecemeal, or can we do it one floor at a time and logistically separate? Which has been, um, very, that's been a, you know, for my department heads, it's just not feasible to do that, okay? We'd have to have a, you know, we'd have a line back and forth. And again, someone comes into town hall, well, you gotta go over there, you know, it's, it's, yeah, there's a lot.
I, I completely don't even begin to understand, but I do understand the logistics of it.
Yeah. Yeah, alright, okay, um.
But like I said, this can be easily pared down, just let us know, um, how you'd like to proceed, if you wanna proceed a little.
Okay. Sure. Alright, give us a chance.
We're warm and happy to voice this seven ways to Sunday.
Yeah, alright. Sure, sure. But you've got all the information you need to be able to.
To play with it.
To play with it however, alright, great.
Yep. Betrayal of existing towns.
Yeah.
And remember, that's gonna offset, which always adds positives.
Right. Right, that's exactly right. I mean, obviously, hopefully, we save some money in the bidding process, that's for sure.
As we do with the PD.
Yes, we did with the PD, that's exactly right. Alright, okay, alright, um.
Thank you.
Let us digest it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you too.
Thank you.
You got an extra thing here, you got?
Oh, no, you keep that, you hold on to that.
I got one here.
And my charge will be to see if I can.
Oh, is it?
No, I'm good. Thanks, sir.
Alright, is it, okay, awesome.
And my charge will be to see if I can find any grant or funding opportunities for the elevator. We may qualify for ADA. And if I can see if there's any grant funding for the heating and the cooling, you know, when there was COVID, there is, you know, a lot of funding out there because of the
Wouldn't hurt the.
The air exchange, so I'm gonna reach out to anyone who may have any needs.
Yeah, any help we can get would be good.
Any help we can get, and that might be a, a blessing. Um, I mean, Gina didn't really, wasn't really that bad when we did this floor
Yeah.
It's a lot.
and the general assistance as far as cost-wise and.
Mm, no.
I mean, I thought that was.
It's a couple, or, you know, two hundred thousand, but, um, but it sounds like you can make it further additional upgrades to your heating and cooling.
Yeah.
Aside from what you have to do now. Yeah, yeah.
But we're all developed, would you put the places together?
Yeah, that's what.
Yes.
Can we start with the elevator, cuz it really scares me.
Up, yeah, well, you know, yeah.
Since we have to, most of us have to come over to the fourth floor to do some of those.
Yeah.
Well, it is, it is regularly serviced and checked, so there's no, there's no concerns with safety in regards to the elevator.
We just got.
Cause we just got it started.
So, and then my question, does someone draw an ADA complaint, and you have the thing at the door downstairs, does it work? Or like someone's in a walker, wheelchair, puts the thing, the door opens automatically, does it work? Cause I can't remember how it.
I believe we're in compliance right now.
Yeah, can you just test the, the button, make sure it works?
Yeah, there's, there's a button there, that works, everything works.
Okay.
Cause we just had, we just had.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No.
Alright.
If the door was locked, it wouldn't work.
Right, um, how many do you want?
There's, there's a crash bar obviously inside for anybody that's inside to get out, that's, that will always open the door.
What if it was locked?
The door.
The lock will get me in.
Right.
Yeah, and if the, if the little light is red on that little box, then it gets locked, so. Alright, um, what else for old business?
That is all I have.
That's all, alright.
I have, um, non-public, so if you would like a motion.
Alright. Alright, um, non-public, um, we're gonna, meeting is adjourned, talk with you, be in touch, Jean. Um, this is ninety-one dash A colon three, Roman numeral two, letter.
C.
C.
Um, do you have?
Ruth Mooney?
Sonny, Ben?
Mr. Walker, are you Mr. Wa-? Oh, you are, okay, so, yes, um, can we just do Cynthia real quick and then?
Yeah.
Mr. Walker, if you don't mind sitting in the hall real quick, I'm just gonna get Cynthia's non-public real fur- quick so that she can go back to work and, then I'll come out and get you. Thank you, sir.
You, you've turned on.
Nope.
Mm-hmm.
Recording stopped.
I got one more, hold on.
Yeah.
Door, no, no, I'm just.
Yep.
Yes, she's.
It broke my spacebar, my spacebar's working on my key water.
Oh, no.